I can't hear it, so.
Be close to it.
Yeah, they're not very sensitive.
Okay, great. Helpful. My name is Piper Nelson and I live off of Circle Lake, so it's just a few miles from the proposed data center site. How does the Archer Data Center position itself to improve the local economic, cultural, environmental, or social health and well-being of Faribault and surrounding communities? The answer is it doesn't. The amount of full-time employees required for a data center will vary based on the level of automation, the end user, and the services provided. With a data center of this size and consideration of modern technology most likely to be used within the facility, we can expect this entire 500-square-foot site to produce a few dozen permanent full-time jobs. And with some of those jobs being outsourced to non-local residents or individuals. The data center will generate relatively few jobs compared to the cost of building and operating of this site, as well as the amount of land it will occupy. In comparison, the Jennio Turkey Plant in Faribault is roughly 140,000 square feet and employs 600 people. Tax abatements. The Archer Data Center would be qualified to receive sales tax exemptions on computers and servers, cooling and energy equipment, and software. The sales tax exemption lasts 35 years. Data centers, and the Archer Data Center in particular, could become obsolete before we even realize those tax benefits that data centers claim to provide to communities they reside in. We all know that data centers can consume massive amounts of energy. The Archer Data Center estimates a daily consumption value of 120 megawatts on their site. I could not see if this was 120-megawatt-hours, or if it's just 120-megawatts, but there's a huge difference between those numbers. The new Energy Action Plan approved by City Council in October 2023 is supposed to help guide the city in making high-impact progress to decrease emissions from energy through clean energy and efficiency projects in the community. The city's goal is to avoid an additional 50% of energy-related greenhouse gas emissions while saving the community energy and money. The impact of reaching this goal is that the city is expected to avoid spending an additional $5.6 million on energy bills. Data centers massively increase energy demands and use diesel generators for backup energy generation. Additionally, the Archer Data Center's website states the proposed Faribault site will have a natural gas capacity of 36,000 decatherm per day.
Fifteen seconds.
Oh, thank you. One decatherm is 10 thermes, which means this data center will have a natural gas capacity of 360,000 thermes. The city's new Energy Action Plan explicitly calls out natural gas as one of the target greenhouse gas emissions the city of Faribault intends to avoid emitting more of. And additionally, the cost of living is an important issue to all Americans. Among some of those costs are utilities. Every location where a data center has been erected across the U.S. has resulted. Thank you.
Thank you all. This could be a very long process, just so you know. It could be years, so. All right, we're moving on. Number six, consent agenda items. Tonight we have 6A through 6R. Would anybody like anything? Being known out to entertain a motion.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item 6A through 6R.
Second.
Motion by Vance Lu, second by Don Boya. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That motion passes. Public hearings tonight, we have none. I'm gonna pause for a moment if anybody wants to. Items for discussion. 8A, Resolution 2025, adopting our strategic plan. Jessica Kinzer, City Administrator.
Yes, I feel like we've talked a lot about this, so I'll keep my remarks very brief of this is, the document that you have attached is really the culmination of many months of work with Allison Burnett, as well as you as the elected officials of the city, the leadership team, and employees from various departments across the city. And so, we've got a new vision, mission, and new set of values that are coming out of this as well, but also multiple goals that are there. And so, the big thing is, this is not the last time you see this. I'm hoping to have kind of an update of, you know, even though we're adopting this for 2026 to 2030, there's been some work happening in 2025, and give you an idea of where things are at the beginning of January for where we in 2025, and get your input on what are the priorities for 2026. So, more to come on that. It will be something that we talk about, at least here quarterly, and potentially more often. But thank you all for the participation in this. I feel really proud of the document that we've come up with, and the plan that we've come up with, and I look forward to working with you on this in the future.
Any discussion or questions for staff at this point in time?
So, if any resident want a copy, will you get a printer copy, and how they can access the plan online?
Yes, I still have to work with Brad on that, but we're gonna build out like a special page on our website where this information will be available along with quarterly updates and some of the data that we have to try and track. We have, we'll probably do a limited printing, but we haven't discussed that and how many that we'll probably do. But if there is anybody that is interested, we would be able to provide a printed copy eventually, and we'll probably take some to future council chats and things as well.
Great. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion.
Go moved.
Second.
Motion by Teal, second by Don Boya to approve the 2025-2030. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item is Ivy Hills, Ivy Hills Senior Center. Leslie McGilroy.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the entrance. I'm very pleased to bring for you today the Ivy Hills Senior Care Facility application to expand their existing center. The applications include a zoning map amendment, a preliminary and final plat, conditional use, and it's got three variances. Oops, one back.
And of course, you are gonna go through all of these in one presentation.
I'm gonna go through them all, and then we'll have a nice summary page at the end that gives all of the recommendations.
Perfect.
Thank you for pointing that out. So, the applicant is Mackenzie Ramsey, and the applicant is here this evening along with her consultant and her business partner of Ivy Hill for Senior Care LLC. The location that's currently functioning is at 607 Second Avenue Northwest. And the location here is just a little bit north and west of the center of town, very location in that city center. The application involves a combination of four separate parcels that have, you might, some of you might recognize this as the site of a former funeral center that has the existing parking lot that served that facility. The property to the east is also was a former care facility, and that has recently been demolished, you may be aware. The little tiny lot to the north and the east, that is the location of the current garage, which is proposing to be located on the site. So, the zoning map change, where the request has been from the applicant to change the zoning of the property from an R3 to an R4, which facilitates the project to combine and replat all of the properties for development efficiency. And under R4, this is the real key for the conditional use permit, facilitate the existing residential care facility, which expands the existing 16 patients to a total of 32 in total. The variances include accessory structure setback reduction, a parking setback reduction, and the landscape transition area planting. Go through this rather quickly. The zoning map amendment, here is the proposed after versus the previous R3. As you can see, there is not directly adjacent any R4 properties, however, but it being that it is contextually very similar of the surrounding area, we feel it is appropriate to recommend approval. Noted the preliminary and final plat, the preliminary to the left on the page and the final plat to the right. The consolidation of four parcels into a single developmental parcel will help facilitate that expansion of the existing facility. As you may be aware, you cannot expand a building across existing property boundaries, and this will also combine very succinctly the whole center for the parking. Now, the conditional use permit, so this is, right now, the center does serve 16 persons, so that is an existing. This is a bit of a, kind of hard to navigate here. The former center on this parcel to the, this is actually to the east, north is to the left of your screen, had a conditional use permit also serving as a care facility. So, when you're looking at this as an expansion, please know that this served approximately 26 individuals at one time as two separately functioning residential care facilities. The combination with the allowance of having it be proposed to up to 32 really only gives you a net game of six additional residents for the center. This is the two layouts of the interior floor plans. The gray is the existing center. The interior layout provides a little bit more residential apartment-style look, and the roof line from the second floor is more illustration on the right-hand side of the page. So, in this again, are illustrations provided by the applicant's consultant, so you can see that the size and the scale and the roof line and the materials used in the facade treatments, they are that residential field, feel with siding and rock face, and while they aren't exactly apples-to-apples as far as identifying the roof line, they still have that residential pitch, which are in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. So, the variance requests, dialing it down into what we're proposing. One resolution proposes to incorporate both the parking setback and the detached garage. So, and a little bit background too, we did have some public comment pertaining to the setback in the variance requests. We had the applicant and the adjoining neighbors to the north and east of the property were not in agreement where the garage was originally proposed. However, through in-person meetings, discussions, and the amended plan you see before here is the result of those discussions, and the allowance here created a larger green space to the south of the garage to surround the proposed trash enclosure. And with that garage location, it did expand marginally a little bit greater area for the setback, for the parking lot from the north and eastern property line. So, ultimately, the request is, or from a 10-foot requirement for parking to 5.5 inches and for the garage, where again, well, that should have, should, in a perfect world would be 10 feet, but because it's a redevelopment site, we understand their constraints, it's 5'9". So, the additional feedback, this wasn't, didn't, wasn't a, wasn't a total out-of-the-park win, let's put it that way, from the public. How, so in that respect, there was concern about constriction of emergency vehicles and any of the service vehicles that might come through the site. So, the applicant provided at our request this turning radius diagram, which shows one of the larger semi-structures, which may or may not occur, but it does show that there is navigation ability for this type of facility, for this type of semi to go through the parking lot. Further request of the information from our city fire chief to verify that health and safety vehicles, emergency responders can access the site, and he went out with a tape measure and did his due diligence and reported back that it is able to be served, which we reported to the planning committee. The landscape request, so the landscape ordinance has a specific language related to transitional areas, areas that are in between two different categories of use. In this instance, where you see the circle with the lighter green area, that is singularly just a fence and lawn. The reason for that is somewhat in response to the discussions with the adjoining neighbors. The area that you see that's a little bit darker green and has more circular plantings, there was concern by the neighbors about the density of screening and the amount of plant material. So, in response to that request, that is why there is a concentration of probably more upright screening material adjacent to parking lot specifically. Now, that doesn't mean that the applicant can't put more landscape in as time goes on. However, this is the, the variance request allows that discretion to manipulate a little bit the concentration of the landscape to, for the, for the good of the project. So, in summary, I'm gonna skip through that. These, we have a recommended approval for all of these. The recommended approval of ordinance 2025-16, it approves the requested zoning map amendment to an R4. The recommended approval for Resolution 2025-285 recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat of the Piper Ramsey addition. Recommend an approval for Resolution 2025-286 approves the CUP, allowing 17 or more patients in a residential care facility. And recommend approval for 2025-287 approving parking and accessory structure setback variances related to the residential care facility use and the Piper Ramsey addition plat. And then finally, the recommend approval for the Resolution 2025-288, which approves the variance to allow limited modifications for the required landscape standards. So, the applicants, as I mentioned, are here today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and as they are too in support of their project.
Any questions for staff? Yes.
So, on item three, Resolution 2025-286, you mentioned serving 17 or more. What is the probability of the or more? What's the target number?
Well, that, that combination with the two properties, that is, the more allows it to, this conditional use permit to 32.
32?
Yep. But that's the, that's the threshold for when you need a CUP, and our ordinance is starting at 17 and above, or 16 and below, 17 and more. So, there's always, so that's the request.
So, for the applicant, is there a currently shelter or basement for the residents? If bad weather or something occurs, how do you resolve that now?
Can I ask you to come on the microphone, please?
Mackenzie Ramsey, I'm the owner of Ivy Hills Senior Care. I live out on Co Trail, but Ivy Hill is 607 Second Avenue. So, our current building has three levels, and on the lower level, there's living space also, but there's room for emergency shelters for like tornadoes and things like that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Nothing further.
Any other questions for the applicant, or?
I just have a question for staff. In the accessory structure, were those, were those changes made after the planning commission meeting?
No. No, they were made before. No, and to expand on that, so if you may have not familiar, they had applied for a much earlier planning commission meeting, but we wanted to take, they graciously gave time and extended the 60-day rule in allowing us to have that meeting with the neighbors to take place in advance, so that when we came to planning commission, it was the summation of what the discussions resulted in.
Staff, currently there on the northern end facing 7th Street, there is already a fence. Does that need to be replaced, or would that remain?
Between the residential property?
Yes.
So, yes, so everything will be refreshed with, right now, the specifications call for a six-foot composite privacy fence, but that, that change is the, at the approval is that it become a privacy fence. We're able to, it will have to step down in where it is adjacent other front yard requirements to be less than that. But for right now, yes, it's intended that all those privacy fences become new and refreshed.
Will be taller than what's existing.
I don't, I couldn't tell you what the existing one is, but the maximum allowed through our ordinance is six feet.
Any other questions for staff? I have none. I just, I guess I would like to add one comment. It passed. Restance before regarding parking laws. Believe that advice. This time I'll entertain a motion, starting off with the ordinance.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-16.
Second.
A motion by Vance Lu, second by Don Boya of ordinance 2516. Call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Don Boya?
Rowan?
Aye.
Vance Lu?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye. Passes. On to number two, Resolution 2025-285.
Mayor Spooner? Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-285.
I'll second.
Motion by Teal, second by Rowan to approve the preliminary and final plat. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That is also passed. Item number three, Resolution 2025-286.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-286.
Aye. All opposed. That also passes. Item number four, Resolution 2025-285, parking and accessory structures.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025.
Second.
Motion by Don Boya, second by Barnes to approve the parking and accessory structures. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Five, Resolution 2025-286 to approve variances and modifications.
Resolution 2025.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Two is passed. Congratulations. Item number C in tonight, Resolution 2025-301, establish a permit parking for Henry M. Square. Jessica Kinzer, City Administrator.
Yes, I will just first upfront say this was added to the agenda very late. There was a parking agreement that was sent out to the developer and to the tenant on Monday by our city attorney. There was feedback received yesterday that was incorporated, and then feedback that was received today, kind of late in the day, and we weren't able to get a response back to them until very close to 5:00 PM. I did add to the resolution that if there would be any changes from the developer or tenant, that would not be substantive changes, that that is something that staff would have the ability to do, but if there's anything that is changing this drastically, that would be something that would need to come back to you. So, what's basically proposed is a 2020, or a 25-year lease for permit parking, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5:00 PM, with there being 90 permits that the city would purchase and provide to the developer/tenant, and then they would be the ones responsible for issuing those permits and keeping track of the records of who has those permits and providing that information to the city of Faribault. This would be open for public parking anytime after 5:00 PM or on the weekends. This would be open for public parking anytime after 5:00 PM or on the weekends. Where things are kind of getting a little weird is that Scott had brought up some changes with not really allowing for sort of termination without mutual consent would be that we could be looking at taxability of the property, and it's never been our intent that this would create a tax liability for us where we would be paying property taxes. So one of the things that's been added that the developer and tenant have not had a chance to provide comment on, due to kind of the ongoing nature of this, was that any property taxes would be the responsibility of the developer and the tenant, should that be something that would happen in the future. So looking ahead for us, we're all trying to protect ourselves, you know, in a long-duration agreement, that we're looking at, we don't want any unexpected surprises, that the county might look at this agreement and say something completely different. But effectively, what you have here is really establishing the permit parking aspect of this and how it would be handled, and I think we're really just down to some fine details on things. A few just other little things to note, because this is kind of one of the final things coming your way. One of the things that they had added was really access to the property during construction. I asked that that be removed, and that come back forward to you as a separate sort of access agreement, knowing this is a 25-year parking agreement, we don't need to mess it up with one little thing that's going to be a year or so in terms of access. We also don't own the property currently. It is still in the hands of the county. The county has not transferred it to us, and I have not had a recent conversation about when that transfer would occur. So I got a little hesitant about including something about construction access in an agreement when we don't own the property yet. So you will still see one more step coming forward. I hope that tonight is something that we've got it kind of laid out of what our concerns are, meeting kind of the things that they've laid out as things that they would like to see related to the duration and termination of the agreement, and waving some language there. So I hope we're in a good spot, and if not, this might be something that would come back to you on a special meeting on the 18th or a special meeting on the 25th, depending on where we would be on getting this done. But our goal is to keep this moving and keep it moving forward as quickly as possible.
I think we're being premature on this. I think we should table this and send it back to committee for further discussion. I won't support it as it's presented to the committee. Complete, and I understand your reasoning, but that's just how I feel about it. Any moving pieces to proceed with it?
I was thinking about something like that. At complete, it is just not complete. What's the reason that it comes up now? Why can't it wait?
It's tied into the closing on the property, and so that is where we were really trying to hit tonight's meeting, especially knowing that we had another day kind of this week, and it just, comments, you know, coming from multiple parties, we don't always all get them at once, and so, and then for us to respond takes a little bit of time when we have to get, you know, our city attorney on a call to kind of go through some of the things, and today just kind of, it ran short. So what's before you is what was our kind of final rendition that we put back to them via email at like 5:10 this evening, and so there was no expectation that they'd be able to provide comment, or that we'd be able to substantively get to probably something other than them saying yes, if that was something they were willing to do, but knew that was going to take time to review on their part.
I'm more troubled by the 25 years. Is already stated that we want this to be a parking lot for the element of a office building on this property. Life insurance policy, I don't know, 25 years.
And that is one of our kind of sticking points on this, and so what does exist in this is that they have to get the city council or a future city council's consent to assign. So the tenant is listed in here, and so if the tenant is no longer going to be party to this agreement, it's a new tenant, that would have to come forward to the city council for you to consent to at a future point.
That is in the language?
Yeah. And so, and then there'd be a discussion at that point of whether you would withhold intent, but their argument is that they're building this building and making a 25-year investment. I think that runs concurrent with the lease, the full lease terms that they have, doesn't get into some of the earlier options that I think exist on that lease, and so we're looking at it as the full terms of their lease, and not just kind of the beginning or the first time that there's an opt-out of the lease.
Right. I'm happy with that explanation. Comments, questions?
It makes me want to ask the next question. If there is an exchange of hands within that timeframe, then we can reassess. What if it's an exchange of partnership or an exchange of presidency or ownership, but the name of the company remains?
That would probably not change anything. It would be if it's a new LLC who would be the developer or the tenant, and so, and developer's really interchangeable here with owner. So those would be the things that would need to change to really sort of bring this back where the council would have to consent to a change.
So if it is not approved?
I honestly don't know. I would assume based on previous things that they have brought forward to you, that this might stop the project. I think that's kind of the biggest level of impact, is that it doesn't move forward until this is resolved. I think then that would be the point where we'd probably want to go back to the table and just say, does this need to be a public parking lot if it's not something that's going to move forward? But if we're going to move forward with us being, you know, permit parking, some sort of parking agreement needs to be approved.
Yeah, anyway, we can have a special station from this after our...
Work session.
Our work session.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly is possible. I mean, that was kind of something that was out there as, if they wanted to make substantial changes to what was presented kind of as our last pass, that was going to come back to you anyways. So that's where, that sort of hangs out there, even with your approval here tonight, if that's something you want to do, is that if they don't like the terms that we presented, then it would be coming back to you again, because that would be a substantial change.
Yeah. What's that? I'm in the motion to move forward. That would be, well, I don't want to see all this work and all this project getting hung up on of all things. I'm too far. This is our goal, is to have an anchor tenant, an office building, a corporate headquarters downtown. Would be, would be very disappointing, so. I think there's ways that you can change it. You could negotiate a change going forward with the arm. Very friendly with certain tendencies in downtown and their philanthropy and other things. Discussing it with them, if there's, needs to be a change in the future, we're hoping for negotiations. So I would like to see it move forward. Yes, Mr. Rowan?
I would caution, rarely in life is rushing to the door a good outcome. Best intentions set aside. That's what we're doing. We're rushing ahead. We don't know what the county's position is on this. You brought up the potential for tax liability. You can bring it forward, but I think it needs further discussion, and I don't think six days, seven days is going to break the deal. I don't.
Yes, Mr.
One thing to point out is there has been a paragraph, any concerns about tax liability are essentially alleviated with paragraph 23. That is what protects us. That's the language in there that protects us. So at this point, it doesn't matter if the county says that, you know, we are tax exempt or not on this, they would be the ones that would have the liability for the taxes. So that should be something that this agreement that's in front of you tonight would take care of that. I think probably would be if they want any changes to that paragraph, that's going to be a substantial change, it's going to come back to you anyways. And so I think that's something that I don't know what their response will be to that paragraph, but that was what our city attorney felt was going to be necessary to protect us, just given the length and duration, and could this be seen as not being a public parking lot and a leased parking lot by the county. So I do feel like that is alleviated with the draft that's before you tonight. The draft that is before you tonight is what Scott Riggs has drafted as of like 4:50 something this afternoon. So this incorporates some of their changes, which we were willing to incorporate, and then adds in some of our changes. The only thing that hasn't happened is the developer review of what's on your agenda tonight.
Yes, just for the record, was drafted by Scott Riggs.
Correct.
Correct. All right. And I'm more inclined to...
I guess, we've been talking about this for a long time. I don't, I guess, rushing into anything at all, and I think with things we have in place, that if they want to make any changes, then we'll just see it on Tuesday. So I'm in favor of this.
All right. Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025-301.
Second.
Motion to approve resolution 2025-301 by Vance Luce, second by Teal. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Aye.
It's three to three.
I believe a tie is a failure at this point.
All right. So I would expect that we would like to see this next week in a special session to move this forward.
You will. Just so you all realize, by defeating this, we have to substantially change this in a way that has not already been substantially changed, and so that might be not necessarily to our benefit of what was before you tonight, but I'll talk with Scott Riggs about this, and we'll talk further about it, because unless there's a motion to reconsider, that's where this is going to be something where I can't guarantee that a draft that would come before you, that would be substantially different from what is before you tonight, is necessarily going to be significantly better or something the developer would agree to. I can't guarantee that the developer agree to this one.
I mean, I don't think it's something for us. We are just making sure that it aligns with, the writing is done, is complete. My point, otherwise, I don't care if the same thing come back and what we want, like, we just want it complete.
I would say what you have before you tonight is as complete as it's going to get from the city side. It's just the developer that hasn't had any comment, and so that's truly to understand, I can't bring you back this draft at the next meeting because you have defeated it.
Yeah.
Why? Because that's not allowed. Unless there's a motion to reconsider where this would move forward, there cannot be the same, you can't vote on the same draft after you've defeated it.
But we can't even revote on it?
You can do, somebody, it's in our rules that you can make a motion to reconsider at the same meeting, before the adjournment of the same meeting, to basically reconsider, but something, if you want to vote on another parking agreement, it can't be the same agreement. It's got to be substantively different.
And Vince, man.
Oh, sorry.
This is going to take, this is going to take, you know, a lot, it's going to take more staff time, Riggs' time, everything. We've talked about this six times or whatever. There's no reason to delay this. All the failings are in place. So if they want to make changes, we're going to see it Tuesday anyway. Okay? If they agree to this, then that's what we want. That's, we all agree that that's what we want. If there's any dramatic changes, we're going to see it Tuesday anyway. But I can't see making staff do all this work again, and how much is Scott Riggs an hour? You know, it's going to be expensive to change it, so I would like to reconsider. I'd like to vote on this again.
Is there any way to put this on hold? Vote on it? Is that an option?
That was...
Would have needed to make that motion to table it to the next meeting before there would have been a vote to vote it down.
I think that was the suggestion, that it was in or from the beginning. Okay, with the reconsideration, can we re, can we move to reconsider it instead of passing it and tabling it?
Yeah, now you're into Robert rules that I don't believe you can.
I think, I think your argument stresses that what Chuck laid out is the fact that if there's going to be any substantial changes to this, we will see it, and we're going to hold up this whole process on the parking lot. The height of the building, the size of the building, what the building looks like, it's over the parking lot. That's... We'd entertain a motion to reconsider, but I think we have a motion to reconsider.
So the only individuals that can make a motion to reconsider would be those three that were in the negative on it.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to it. I just don't think my questions are being resolved. I still think we're rushing into it. I appreciate your position. Our attorney is there to protect the city, to protect us, to protect the public's best interest. I get that, but when was this attached to the packet?
It was attached at like 5, I think it was like 5:09, 5, something like that. The time is on the website for when the agenda was published.
I will add, and for the record, before you know, it's just your, this resolution was drafted by our attorney. Scott Riggs was here tonight, he'd be telling you the facts. The guy that wrote it?
Yeah, for me, my point is, you know, based on the time it came into this, because I never had much time to actually do some research on some stuff, so it's like, it came in right few minutes before our meeting time, usually, I don't know, I don't know whether that was appropriate, or, I know they want to close, do closing. I want to see this in the downtown area, but also, we just want to do it for the benefit of the city. But if, like he said, if the developer review it, and also want changes to it, it would come back to us.
That's why if you go ahead and reconsider and approve it tonight, and the developer has a problem with it, you're still going to see it again. Right? Don't have a problem with it? You won't, but this is a resolution drafted by our attorney.
Can I ask for a 10-minute recess? For me, so I can go through it. That was in the building at 5 o'clock. I have not seen this.
Not seen it either. That's, I'm not comfortable. I didn't even know it was on the agenda.
So give me a 10-minute recess, I'll look it over, and if I feel it's appropriate, I'll make that motion.
Sure. Yeah, well, do we have a motion on the floor for a 10-minute recess?
Aye.
All opposed. For 10 minutes.
Do you need a copy, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I hold the printout from here?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Is it going?
Sorry, staff, I just want to make sure this is right.
Oh, no. The internet. Oh, no, the internet.
Chuck. At recess, city council is back in session. We're at this point in time, we're entertaining a motion to reconsider. Uh, staff has had time, council's had time to look at this resolution. But John, John Rowan had the floor here.
I, I'm prepared to bring this forward as, as long as no one has any concerns.
No, I just wanted to ask. That in the developer, so which one of the developer did not?
Neither developer or the tenant had time to review. Like it was, it was literally finalizing this about like 10 minutes to 5:00 PM and then instantly putting it in your packet for reconsider, or for consideration tonight. So they've not had a chance to review this draft and get back to me before this meeting started.
So if they haven't done that, why are we doing that?
Because the draft that's before you is what has been prepared by the city attorney and addresses all the things that we had identified as needing to be addressed. And so the draft before you is what is being recommended for approval. What I don't want to like forego is that they might see something then and come back with this is how we would like to word it, meaning that then we'd bring it back to you at the next meeting because they would be changing something with it that would potentially substantially change part of the agreement.
Okay, let me be fast. Let me just be specific. But so the disagreement is between three parties. Three, Farbo, the men, yeah, KGP. Did KGP review this?
KGP is, so KGP and Farbo Real Estate LLC tenant and developer have not had a chance to review the draft that is in front of you tonight.
So on our part, we are approving this as a city and then present it to them for review. If they agree, then that's it. It's not coming back. And then if they want anything changed, they will come back and then we will.
Yeah, if, if it substantially change the, changes the agreement. If it's just a word here or a word there that doesn't change the, the intent of the agreement and the intent of what's here, then it would not come back to you. You would of course still be provided with a final copy and we would keep you updated on that. But like, for example, if they don't like that tax exempt status paragraph and are gonna propose something completely different, that's coming back to you at the next meeting regardless of your action tonight of approval.
So we have this paragraph. For example, they want to change a whole sentence. It come back to us. Let's say a complete sentence.
It, it truly depends on what that sentence means and if it's probably changing risk and liability for the city versus them. And so that's where I can't say, you'd have to ask me a specific sentence and if they changed it, because that's what we would be looking at is what, what were they changing? And does it change something that would be different than what you have before you in terms of meaning and intent?
I, I want to wait, I want, I like this. But I mean, change. And I would like to see if, if they are changing a complete sentence, it should be brought back to the council.
Well, I would just like to point out every development agreement that you approve with the plat leaves the same language in that staff is able to basically negotiate the different terms after you have approved it. And so like this is not uncommon, like this language, we're just applying it to a parking agreement, which we don't ever really do. I think this is one of the first ones that's been done. But this is something you regularly do every time you approve a, a final plat. Because there's a development agreement that goes along with that, that always has in the resolution that staff can continue to work with the developer on any changes that need to be made to bring this to completion.
Okay, so one thing I would recommend, we have our city attorney. What is being said is technically saying, well, we can bring this or we can't. The response is not really telling me that it will come back if.
I would be notifying you via email of any changes that they requested that we deemed with our city attorney's opinion to be not substantially changing any of the meaning or intent of the agreement that's before you tonight.
Okay, I agree with that. If you can update us through email and because if it is something that is off bringing it back to council, then we can request that. Is that correct?
Yeah, essentially like if there's something that is so minor that it's not changing any of the major terms of the agreement.
We would determine that, sorry.
Our, our city attorney would be determining that.
Okay, yeah. So if the attorney determine that.
It would come back to you on the 18th.
John Rowan.
All right. Mayor Spooner, I make a resolution to approve 2025.
We need first a motion to reconsider.
Okay, I make a motion to reconsider 2025 three zero one.
All right, we have a motion to reconsider the resolution.
Aye.
There's a motion to reconsider. So it's back on the table.
Okay, Mayor Spooner.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025 dash three zero one.
Second.
By Rowan, second by Barnes to approve the resolution.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Francis, thank you very much. No problem. It's something you just don't want to.
Good request, yeah, though.
That's it. Bids tonight, we have none. Thank you, staff, for sticking around tonight. Boards, commissions, reports, project updates. Anyone?
Uh, the Paradise, of course. Paradise is inviting everyone to the holidays opening, Holly Days opening reception Thursday, November 20th. It's from four to 7:00 PM and we'll continue through.
And I just have a few announcement. One, one of them builds on that. So tonight, we were supposed to have a council chat because it's the second Wednesday of the month, but we have a council meeting instead. So we're not doing a council chat in the month of November. So the next one will be on December 10th, Wednesday, December 10th, at Paradise Center for the Arts. And so we'll be there then. I think we'll be talking some, about some of the programming that they do and things that they do as a partner of the city. But might also have a specific topic as well. And then the other thing, the county put out a press release today that the truth in taxation notices went out via mail today. So you will probably be seeing those in your mailbox as soon. As a reminder, our property tax levy public hearing will be on December 9th at 6:00 PM. And that would be the, the meeting where there would be the number of resolutions related to adopting the budget and everything. So we'll hopefully see more people accessing our receipt, property tax receipt online and we'll do more to push that out. But if you have any questions about anything, please feel free to let me know.
Okay. And the last thing I'm gonna add is tomorrow ribbon cutting ceremony, Laiduck Park, 3:30 to 5:30. I'm sure there's certain staff members. I'm stalking them. I am not. But I was at the park this afternoon at about four o'clock and yes, it looked fabulous. Little bit behind schedule what we'd like, but it's impressive. I'm excited. Here and dear to my heart. Thank you, staff. I hope everybody comes out.
Bring your bathing suits.
3:30 tomorrow, Laiduck Park. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Barnes, seconded by DaMoya, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.